We're going to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order. It's Monday, it's May 10, 2021, at 7:12 in the evening. And we're going to reconvene from our closed session. There were no reportable actions taken at closed session. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members in the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Santiness.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Starting with our announcements, I'll begin with the Bellflower Parks and Recreation Department presents Bellflower's Night at the Drive-In. Our second movie, Jumanji: The Next Level, will be showing on June 18th at 8:00 p.m. at Sims Park. Registration is limited, so be sure to register as soon as you can and go to AMPActiveCommunities.com. That's AMP dot active and then the word communities dot com slash Bellflower Recreation. For more information, you can call 562-804-1424, extension 2261. We want to also thank County Supervisor Janice Hahn for the sponsoring of this event. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower has begun our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs every 10 years following the release of the census results. It is an opportunity to redraw the district lines based upon population changes indicated in the census at the state, county, and city levels. Residents can submit maps of their own to get involved in the process. For more information, you can visit our redistricting website at www.drawbellflower.org or email redistricting@bellflower.org. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, Bellflower staff continues to work with District 4 County Supervisor at Janice Hahn's office and the Los Angeles County Public Health Department to use, you know, our Sims Park as a vaccination site every Thursday through May. So everyone ages 18 or older is eligible to receive the free Moderna COVID-19 vaccines. All appointments that are required and can be made at myturn.ca.gov. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks to you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you know that the Lakewood Sheriff's Station has a volunteer on patrol program? This program services the following cities: Lakewood, Bellflower, Paramount, Artesia, and Hawaiian Gardens. During this past year of uncertainty, our community has come together stronger than ever. The Lakewood Sheriff's Station is extending the opportunity for Bellflower residents to apply for the volunteer on patrol position. As things begin to resume normal operations, the Lakewood Station Volunteers on Patrol Program will also recommence. If you're interested in volunteering, visit www.lasdorg/lakewood and scroll down to Volunteer Applications. Please fill out the application and bring it into the station on Bellflower Boulevard or at the Lakewood Station. Once the application is received, you will be placed on a list pending a background check. For further questions, you may contact the volunteer coordinators, Deputy Ramirez and Deputy Williams, at 562-623-3500. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny R. Santiness.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Digital Gift Card Program continues to benefit both the local businesses that have been hurt here by COVID-19 pandemic and customers have been hurt by the economic fallout. The website, www.buybellflower.com, is a one-stop shop for purchasing digital gift cards from participating Bellflower merchants. These e-gifts can be purchased now and redeemed at a later date, which keeps shopping simple and safe. Over 35 merchants are selling digital gift cards, ranging from restaurants to retail goods to personal services. Discounts have been provided by the city to encourage local spending. Purchasers will receive bonus dollars for its gift card purchase. That is 25% discount on purchases from $100 and up and 20% discount on purchases of $25 to $99. And Bellflower merchants can register for free. I can tell you this is a win-win situation because you get discounts and you help our local merchants. So for more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2249. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santiness, for that report. Before we get to our presentations, we're honored tonight to have with us Fernando Dutra, City of Whittier Council member and our newly-elected Metro Board Member. Mr. Dutra, you have the floor and we'll help you with the presentation here at City Hall.
Great, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and Mayor Protem and council members and staff of the city of Bellflower. It's an absolute honor and I'm excited to be able to present to you the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor Alignment. As you know, we've all been working on this for a long, long time. And I can tell you that the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor project has my full focus, laser focus, if you will. And it is important to me that we accomplish this project and we do it in a manner that some of us can still write it at some point. So having said that, I'd like to take you through the slide presentation. If we could, but before we do that, I want everybody to remember something. And a lot of you may know this, there's not been an opening of a light rail line in the southeast LA County cities since 1995, when the Green Line opened. So imagine that, right? And it's been a long time. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide, first slide, I should say. There we go. So here is a project overview of the alignment. The West Santa Ana Branch Alignment extends from the city of Artesia heading north along the Old Pacific Electric West Santa Ana Branch Red Car Line right-of-way. The line will connect to the regional transit hub at Los Angeles Union Station or possibly the 7th Metro Station. Both of these options are currently under consideration, as you know. The technology that was chosen is a conventional light rail system, which is selected because it's best able to fit a built-out environment, as we have in our region, as you know, and still accommodate what we anticipate will be a ridership of about 70,000 people. Significant, as you can imagine. So if you looked at the information there, the study area is 98 square miles. And the potential and the employment, as it is today, is 618,000 people. With the potential projected for 746,000 employment. Look, we have one of the highest dense areas and connecting light rail to housing locations, work locations, retail and commercial is an important component to this. And this map, which is a great map, I'm really thankful to Metro staff for having pulled this together, gives you an idea of all of the opportunities along this alignment. Next map, please. So, the project goals, as you know, here they are, they're listed here. It's a unique opportunity with this line to integrate economic development opportunities along the various cities. I see this as a land use opportunity as well, not just transportation, but land use. I mean, if cities know that this is being planned, I think it's incumbent upon the cities to start planning for future opportunities. You know, whether it's through a general plan update, if you happen to be in that process, or through a specific plan update, but this is a great opportunity to do so. Bellflower and other cities have taken a long, hard look at the economic development opportunities, are planning stations accordingly. I know that you guys are. Bellflower Partner Structure is an example of a forward-looking project that can accommodate future growth for the downtown area as well as for transit ridership. I mean, you know, as a builder, that's my day job. I look at this as an opportunity to create a balanced housing portfolio for all of the cities and really excited about this. So, next slide, please. So the FTA Metro Draft EIS/EAR alternatives. So here are the four alternatives, as we are currently reviewing at Metro. MTA has divided the alignment into four separate alignments alternatives, which is defined on the slide. I think we can all agree that Alternative 1 is our favorite, right? Is the one that we would like to push through and is the product that will help our corridor cities meet the mobility goals as well as supporting the economic development along the alignment. I plan to work hard to push to sure that we're going to have funding throughout from state, federal, and local resources, so we can make this happen. But it doesn't happen without the money, right? And so that's a big, big focus of mine, is how we can bring federal, state, and local money together, you know, or we call in the private side, you know, capital stacking for this project. I need to add that the project is almost 20 miles long. Because of the construction mobilization, as you can imagine, it's highly unlikely that the entire line will be built at the same time. The foothill and expo lines, as you may be aware of, were each built in constructible segments. It's far-fetched to believe that we would be able to build this all in one segment. It'd be built in segments, which I think helps out the impacts as well. Next slide, please. So, a more focused opportunity to look at the Alternative 1 and 2, which is the Downtown 2 Pioneer. This really kind of highlights, you know, the alternative and the alignments, if you will, and what the potential impacts could be to each one of these regions, right? The Union Station, Alternative 1, and of course, you know, how it impacts going through Little Tokyo, the Arts Industrial District as well. This really kind of gives us a more focused, if you will, opportunity to look at that. Both of these options terminate in the city of LA. Our cities have expressed and decided a preference for the Los Angeles Union Station that provides a one-seat ride to Union Station for access to MetroLink and Amtrak. That's the beautiful thing about this alternative, that it provides us direct access to Union Station and then ultimately to MetroLink and Amtrak, as well as the entire metro rail system. The Dash Line gives us the two options to the northern terminus. So those are the other two options, the northern side. For the Union Station option, there are two termini. One discharges riders on Alameda in front of the Union Station and the other would bring the West Santa Ana Branch on the track side of the station, if you can imagine that. And by the way, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, I'll leave this presentation with you if you want to study it and follow up with questions as well, or it's an opportunity to kind of look it through. So, next slide, please. The environmental clearance, right? This is where all the heavy paperwork is done. Here's the detail on the environmental clearance process, the dates that we've achieved and where we are today. The project is undergoing clearance through both the National and California Environmental Acts. Clearance takes a little bit longer, but it enables a project to receive federal funding. So in order to receive the big bucks from the feds, we have to go through this more onerous review, if you will. The important dates on this slide is June, July, as you can see, which is the release of the draft document that will trigger the public review process. And if you're wondering about the public review process, once we release, you know, the document in July, Metro will reach out to the communities with a list of dates that we'd like to come into the community and have public forums. Those will be very important to advertise on your website, as well as, I don't know what, how you guys have handled it in the past, but I know that what we have done with the East Side Goal Line is we have a list email of all of the stakeholders and we send out an email and we invite everybody to the public comment sessions. Assuming that they're going to be open, I don't know, probably not. So therefore, we're going to have to do this on a Zoom virtual basis, I would assume. I think that's kind of what the process is going to be. But as you can see, the board, it's going to the board, you know, to us at Metro sometime in September. Hopefully, we'll meet that date. And then, at that time, the board will select the locally preferred alternative, which is the LPA. A final EIR and a Record of Decision is expected in the summer of '22. Next slide, please. So this is a, I don't know, I mean, I think they're all important, but for me, this is the most important slide, right? Because it's about the money and how we get the money. And, you know, we can't do any of this without getting the money. So the dedicated project funding is the top line with a billion dollars available at 2028, with an additional $3 billion available in 2041. But there's an additional $90 to $200 million in measure funds that will be reallocated upon completion of the I-5 project. The MTA last week took action, actually last month, I should say, we took action to create a Federal New Starts Funding Priorities program. So once again, it's called the Federal New Starts Funding Priorities. The West Santa Ana Branch is at the top of the list. This is important as the MTA has been very successful in attracting federal funding. Metro staff is developing a funding strategies to integrate local sales tax as well as federal funding that can support an anticipated private, a public-private partnership. I can tell you that we are working on a P3 opportunity for this alignment. I know that having worked on this for years, as well as the Goal Line, that this project attracts the P3 operators much better than some of the other alignments because of the connectivity to all of the resources that it has. And so my assumption is that, once we take this out to the P3 market, that this is really going to be an attractive alternative, which, by the way, will help support the project and move it faster, as you know, to approval. So, that's my last slide, and I thought it would be the most important one because, you know, we have to talk about where the money's coming from and how we're going to get it. I am 45 days into this job as your Metro Board Representative. The 45 days since I've been elected, thank you very much for having elected me. We've been very busy and there's a little bit of a learning curve, but I'm fortunate that I've been, you know, doing this for a while on the COG and as part of Coalition for the East Side Alignment as well. To give you a little bit of an update on what we're doing, we're interviewing for deputies, we've interviewed seven great candidates, all very, very capable in their own way. We've narrowed it down to three next week, or this week, I should say. We hope to have a second round of interviews so that we can bring on a deputy to help our team out, which really is, helps our region out, if you will, so that we can start really pushing hard on each one of these items. I've met so far with seven cities in the last 45 days. My goal is to meet with all 27 cities. And when we do so, we're asking questions, what is it that Metro can do for our city? And we're getting great lists, some things, there's some commonality and some common issues, but there's also some individual things that the cities have that we need to focus. I will plan to take all of these things to my first meeting with a new CEO. As you know, we have a new CEO. Name is Stephanie Wiggins. She is an alumni of Metro and has come back to Metro, very highly, very capable, engaged, an engaged CEO, a leader, and that knows our region. As a matter of fact, she is a Whittier College alumni. And, but once again, she's an engaged leader and I'm looking forward to working with her. But I want to make sure that when we go meet with her and representing the East Side cities, we have a clear list of the things that we need. And then, you know, I'm just not going to leave the list there. My expectation is that we'll manage to, my, you know, my team will manage the budgets and schedules. That's what I do for a living. My expectation's the same from Metro. And we're hoping to do some great things over the next few years. So to that, I think I probably exceeded my timeframe, but, you know, you guys know I'm a council member as well and I can't help myself sometimes. Ray knows that. But I'm open for questions and, you know, whatever I don't know or can't remember, I'll make sure that we reach back to you with answers. But I'm very, very excited about this and this is an opportunity for us to strike while the iron's hot. And I think it's appropriate right now for the West Santa Ana Branch. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to allow my council colleagues to ask you a few questions. I'm going to start off with Mayor Protem Ray Dutton. Any questions of Mr. Dutra?
Hey Ray, I think you're muted.
Yeah.
Ray, have you got any questions of Mr. Dutra?
Yeah, no, I heard you, yeah. I take back everything I said now. I want you to know that Mr. Dutra's coming out running and running fast and hard. You know, this is the first presentation we ever got from an MTA Board Member. He's been doing this for some time, he knows what's going on. We all have different thoughts about the West Santa Ana Branch, but there's one thing that is clear, it's gonna, I don't know where the start and the finish is, but Pioneer Boulevard or Pioneer, the end of the line or the front of the line is in all four of those options, route options. So that's a sure. We've never been sure of anything before until Fernando was on. And now we saw that, we at least know where it's going to go to Artesia. We just don't know where it's, how far it's going. I suspect they get an alignment and then build out as the money comes, as like Mr. Dutra already said. But with that, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome, Ray. And look, what you guys can expect out of me is more of these presentations and updates. I think that it's important that we stay engaged, right? Because the only way these projects are going to get built is if we lock arms and if we go to Metro and we articulate the importance of the region receiving these alignments. And I know that these things are, you know, they're far away, you know, they're not tomorrow morning projects. But these aren't the kind of projects, they're not a race. This isn't a race, it's a marathon. And our job today is to put these plans into action so that they can be built. We don't do what we're doing today, all of us, together here, it'll just never happen. So we're going to make it happen and I appreciate your support throughout all of this.
Hey, can we get the PowerPoint off the screen? Whoever's in charge of that, there we go. Now I can see everybody.
Any other questions, Ray?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, have you any question, Mr. Dutra?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, first off, Fernando, thank you for representing us. I know you've jumped right in and I know you're working hard because I've seen you on some of the presentations and definitely you've, again, learned it quickly. And of course, I mean, obviously, the big question is, you know, how far can we go with it? And, you know, and you'd mentioned it, it's going to take funding. And I know at the beginning, they, again, everybody was saying, this is going to be done by the Olympics. And, I don't know, we're not sure yet still. But, I mean, in your gut, you think it's going to, at least get to some point, at least from Pioneer to the Blue Line, at least, so that there can be that connection, at least to head north to the, you know, to the downtown. And I know on some of the other presentations, I've been able to participate. And I did ask Metro staff, again, just to kind of put it out there, just as the reminder, of course, because after the environmental, again, you know, they'll be looking at, you know, further property acquisitions. And there'll be, hopefully, some confirmation, again, of the grade separations. And the one other thing that always comes up with, you know, the rail lines and stations is, you know, what are we going to get as a station? And then how much is it going to cost for us to do any upgrades? So those are kind of like the usual things that I'm going to be, you know, watching out, you know, watching for. And again, I do want to thank you for, again, you know, sticking with us and, you know, making the West Santa Ana Branch line, you know, one of the priorities. Okay, thank you, Fernando.
So, Councilman Hamada, if I could try to answer some of your questions because they're important questions and they're important comments as well. 2028 is seven years away.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it would be foolish to assume that the entire line could be built in seven years, right?
Yeah.
But what's not foolish to assume is that we can at least start something. Start one portion of the alignment. If you recall, we're not going to be able to build the entire thing, it's 20 miles, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, when they start coming, when we start coming to you, to your city, you know, and you become engaged and you're engaged in the public comments, I highly recommend, you know, suggesting to Metro that they build your alignment portion first, right? Because you're going to have the opportunity to provide those comments. You know, sometimes these alignments can start at either end and meet in the middle, right? And I don't know, I don't know what the plan is for the start and stop because that'll be a constructibility issue. But I would certainly say that it's important that, when you think in terms of a planning perspective, Union Station and downtown, you know, it's built out, they know what they have. But yet, what this alignment can bring to the East Side cities by starting here first is bring an immediate, you know, understanding of what it can produce for the East Side cities, so Bellflower, Artesia, so on and so forth. And so I would highly encourage you to have a phasing plan that you prefer when that happens. And I think that is an important comment that needs to come out of it. Also, you know, when you talk about the 3% local contribution, that's a problem for our cities, right? And we need to, that's an 800-pound gorilla in the room, if you will. I'm going to work with staff, with Metro staff, to see if we can get some kind of a local contribution. In other words, if you've put money towards a parking, you know, a parking garage or something that is within a certain mile radius that will contribute to an alignment, maybe that's thought of or is used as a contribution already, and like contribution. So we need to think creatively if we're going to make this happen. But, yeah, I hope I answered some of your questions.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Fernando.
Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Councilmember Victor Sanchez, you have questions of Mr. Dutra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Dutra, first off, it's a pleasure to put a face to the name. It's a pleasure to meet you even in this circumstances. I think Councilmember Hamada pretty much asked my question and it sounds like from a standpoint of where the southeast part of the line lands on the phasing structure, it sounds like we still have to advocate for that and there's more work to do before that, that's determined as to which section is going to go first. Is that, is that correct?
It is, yeah. That's correct. And by the way, if I, there's still some things that are constantly changing. But I think that that is correct. I would certainly recommend advocating for a phasing plan that supports where you'd like this thing to start, right? And, you know, it's important that Metro hears that. And because here's the thing, if it doesn't make it into Metro's environmental document, then it won't happen that way, right? So it's important that we get that information upfront and planned in there. I haven't sat down with Metro yet and kind of thought through a phasing plan myself. I mean, you know, I'm a infrastructure contractor for, you know, twenty years. And so when I look at these things, I think through what it takes to create the right of way and what the impacts might be and but I plan on doing that and hopefully really get down into the weeds, if you will, of what makes sense for our communities. But don't forget, just as important as the infrastructure side of this, is the land use side of this, right? So Councilman Sanchez, think in terms of, you know, how this alignment comes through your city, right? I mean, and if you want to just have fun on a, on a Google map, just pull up a Google map, overlay the alignment onto the streets that it's going to impact and start thinking about what the impacts could be of those properties that go along the alignment, right? There might be some opportunities to do, to bring lots together, to do what we call lot assemblage, to create other sized projects. Either whether it's for mixed use or whether it's affordable housing or whether it's, you know, and like, I'm a I'm a supporter of blend of housing, not just affordable or mixed use, but a blend of different types of housing, which is what I think makes cities successful. And take a look at that and see where should we connect the retail, future retail clustering, you know, and where should we be looking at that? And so but the land use portion of this is just as important as the alignment. So I hope you guys have an opportunity to focus on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutra. I appreciate that and appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Sanzianes, questions please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, congratulations on your election to the Metro Board.
Thank you.
As Mr. Dutra. And thank you for your presentation. I'm curious about your last slide, it talks about funding. It shows one billion dollars in twenty-twenty-eight. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so I'm just kind of curious, what can one billion dollars buy in today's, in today's age? In terms of the rail line?
Great question, Councilman Sanzianes. And I'll tell you what it buys, it buys us a down payment. Okay? And it buys us an opportunity to step into future federal funding as well. I mean, federal funds and state funds aren't going to come unless they know that there's some, some money in the bucket to support the project. The billion dollars, look, let me consider this. I've heard some estimates that these are a billion dollars per mile. Okay? So, which, by the way, is interesting because I've done a lot of research. In Japan, they're doing it for five hundred million dollars a mile, right? So this is a significant difference. We need to kind of study, why is it that it's costing us almost five hundred million dollars more here in the United States than it is in Japan, right? What is it that they're doing differently that we need to be doing? So to answer your question, the billion dollars is a down payment on, on our opportunity to go out and, you know, attract federal and state funds, which was what we're going to do now with the new starts program that we have in place.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, but you gotta have something to start with, right?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And you put it correctly, it's a down payment. And I think that in your chart also, I noticed that September of this year is a very critical date, September twenty-twenty-one. That's the local preferred alternative selection. So as elected officials, how can, I know that you mentioned that you prefer alternative number one. So how can we help you advocate for alternative number one?
So that's a great question because this only happens if we have political will, right? If we have, you know, the numbers and if we can lock arms together to do this, make this happen. I am going to be reaching out to you, you know, and the communities along and I think what we'll do is I'll ask for your support to the local leaders, you know, the MTA board members as well as the county supervisors and potentially Congress as well and the Senate members, need to pull together, come together as one and write a letter in support of the project, but more importantly, just as importantly is getting the federal funding. This isn't going to happen without the federal funding. So, you know, Councilmember Sanzianes, did I pronounce that properly?
Oh yes, absolutely.
Okay. It's, that's how you're going to help me, is how we're going to help each other. Is that, at a point, at a strategic time, we're going to come to you, we're going to say, here's a letter, I need you all, you know, to sign this, get behind it and let's go to Metro and let them know how important it is. By the way, Inez was my grandmother's, great-grandmother's name also, and so I haven't heard that in a long time.
So we're related?
Maybe, yeah. Yeah, but I hope I answered your question.
Yes, and let me assure you that, you know, we are very supportive of this project, especially with alternative number one, and you know that you can count on us. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzianes, appreciate it very much. The questions that I had have all been answered, Mr. Dutra, but I do want to thank you for taking the opportunity to meet with us tonight and would encourage you to do it again. And if you want to put together at some point, when we get our restrictions off our meetings, some sort of a meeting where you involve some other cities along the West Santa Ana branch where we can meet together and be of one mind, so we all pull in the same direction. I'm sure we'd be a part of that or we even hosted for you. But know that we're in support of you, we're glad you're in the seat. And I want to thank you so much for coming out this evening and addressing our council and our public.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much. And I think that that meeting of the group is a great idea and you can count on it. We're going to make that happen. So thank you very much this evening, Council, and look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thanks.
Moving on to presentations, we're going to declare National Public Works Week. And we have a proclamation here that reads, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient community and to the public health and high quality of life and well-being of the people of City of Bellflower, whereas it is a public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children of the City of Bellflower to gain knowledge of public works programs and their respective communities, whereas the year two thousand twenty-one marks the sixty-first Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now hereby, I, Dan Coops, do hereby designate the week of May sixteen through May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, as National Public Works Week. And it's signed by myself, Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Pro Tim Ray Dunton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, Councilmember Sunny R. Sanzianes. And here is the proclamation. If you're watching this on Zoom, you can see we really do have a proclamation and it reads just as been indicated. That will be our first presentation. Next is its Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is important for all our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities and businesses. And whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illnesses often keep people from seeking treatment that can improve their quality of life. Whereas mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their ability to live, work, learn and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. And I now, therefore, Dan Coops, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, as National Mental Health Awareness Month. Signed by myself, Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Pro Tim Ray Dunton, Councilmember Raymond Y. Hamada, Councilmember Victor A. Sanchez and Councilmember Sunny R. Sanzianes. And again, we have this proclamation that is exactly as I read it. And so Mental Health Awareness Week, May sixteenth through May twenty-second. Third proclamation, Asian and Pacific Islander Month. Whereas the month of May is Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas Asian-American and Pacific Islanders have flourished and succeeded in our society, become a vital part of our nation's history. And whereas the Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities have made important contributions to the cultural, civic and economic life of Bellflower. And whereas the Asian-American and public islander populations are comprised of many languages, ethnicities contribute to the celebrated diversity of Bellflower and the nation, whereas Asian-American and Pacific Islanders have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country, state and city, achieving the successes in all aspects of society, including business, medicine, education, politics, science and the arts. Now, therefore, I, Dan Coops, Mayor of City of Bellflower, do hereby claim May twenty-twenty-one as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Month. And it's signed by myself, Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Pro Tim Ray Dunton, Councilmember Raymond Y. Hamada, Councilmember Victor A. Sanchez and Councilmember Sunny R. Sanzianes. And here is the proclamation that I've just read. And congratulations to our Asian-American Pacific Islander members of our community, it's Heritage Month on your behalf. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the more button at the bottom, the right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press the number six to raise your hand. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. So Madam City Clerk, do you have anyone on the line that would like to address the council?
Mayor, I have a raised hand for Mr. Bill Cinco. Mr. Cinco, if you could give me a moment to get the timer on the screen, you may begin. Okay.
You have three minutes for your presentation, sir. Go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor and honorable councilmembers, I just wanted to come online tonight and say thank you very much for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I am the executive director for Community Family Guidance Center, a children's mental health agency, a nonprofit, serving the Bellflower area. In fact, Bellflower is our third largest city that we draw clients from. And we also have a very good relationship with the Bellflower Unified School District and have special contracts with them as well to treat and help students of that particular district. So I just wanted to come on board real quick and say thank you very much for recognizing this month and for helping to remove the stigma that's involved with mental health. Thank you all very much for all that you do. We appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you very much for your testimony and we appreciate the fact that we can recognize and understand more about our mental health concerns. Moving forward, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone else like to address the council?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any further raised hands.
Thank you very much. Item nine A, Mr. Stewart.
This is public hearing to consider impossible action and conduct public hearing to consider reading by title only, waive further reading and introduce ordinance number fourteen oh seven, an ordinance amending Bellflower Minnesota code BMC, section seventeen point eight-eight, off-street parking requirements to establish parking requirements for religious institution-affiliated housing development projects in accordance with state law.
And who will be presenting staff report?
Ms. Corpus.
Ms. Corpus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And if the City Clerk can please let me share my screen? Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Just to confirm, can you see my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so as of January first, two thousand twenty-one, Assembly Bill eighteen fifty-one became effective. AB eighteen fifty-one limits the number of parking spaces the city may require in connection with a religious institution-affiliated housing development project. For short, we call it READ. An amendment to the BMC is required to bring it into conformance with California law. And on April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, the Planning Commission recommended the City Council adopt the draft ordinance with a vote of four to one. A summary of Assembly Bill eighteen fifty-one, and I'll go through each line item. It prohibits requiring the replacement of religious-use parking spaces that is eliminated as part of a housing development, and that's specifically an affordable housing development. AB eighteen fifty-one, it provides a definition for a READ as a housing project that meets certain requirements, and that's outlined in the bill. It allows for the elimination of up to fifty percent of the total religious-use parking. It prevents requiring a developer to cure a pre-existing deficit of the number of religious-use parking spaces as a condition of approval. So for example, if there's a religious institution that has an affordable housing project and the religious institution is, already has a deficit in parking or is non-conforming in parking, the city would not be able to establish a condition of approval to make sure that that religious institution meets the parking standards. AB eighteen fifty-one states that the elimination of religious-use parking spaces does not constitute a concession as per the Dantony bonus laws. It prohibits denying a READ solely on the basis that the project will reduce the total number of parking spaces to maximum of fifty percent. It allows the number of remaining religious-use parking spaces to count towards the number of spaces required for the READ. And if the READ is within a half-mile of a high-quality transit corridor or a major transit stop, or there is a car-share vehicle within one block of the parcel, additional exceptions are allowed to park. So just to put it into some context, I do have an example to show the council. This is an example of a religious institution on a lot that has thirty parking spaces. The yellow square would represent where the affordable housing development would be located. And it would take up fifty percent of the existing religious-use parking spaces. And then the remainder of the parking spaces that are not covered by the yellow or the teal box would be counted towards the READ. So basically, the remaining religious institution parking spaces are counted towards that use and also for the affordable housing use. And the bill also allows the development to be parked at one parking space per unit. Now, there are certain exceptions, as I As I mentioned earlier, if it's within a half-mile of a transit station, then it eliminates more than 50% of the parking spaces. And it still requires the remaining parking spaces to be counted towards the READ, and it can be parked at less than one space per unit. So this provision is quite interesting because it could ultimately result, worst-case scenario, in little to no parking for the religious institution. One other thing to point out, in the bill, the READ can be on a contiguous lot, so it doesn't necessarily need to be on the same lot as the religious institution. Or it can be separated, but not more than .1 miles. So the recommendation this evening is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, way further reading and introduce ordinance number 1407, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So have Mr. Dutton have any questions of staff on this report?
No, not yet, Mayor.
I won't do the public hearing, but I'll do the questions. All right, thank you, Mr. Dutton. Mr. Santianez, have any questions of staff on this report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Elizabeth, can you explain? There's a provision here that says about a car-share vehicle within one block of the parcel. How does that work?
That's a good question, and it's kind of worded very poorly in the bill. How I take that is that if you are within a half-mile of a property that has a car-share vehicle, meaning it's vehicles that are used for carpooling or for multiple people to use to get from point A to point B, then it would allow for the project to have less parking than what's required. The way it's worded is that it's a car-share vehicle, so the way it's worded, it almost seems like it just needs to be a vehicle that's used for car-share on the street, almost kind of like scooters. Those electric scooters are commonly used. The way it's worded is a car-share vehicle, not a car-share site. I think the intent was that it was going to be a car-share vehicle site, but it's not necessarily worded like that. So if we had a project that was proposing that and proposing to use that as an exception, we would require proof from the developer to show us where that car-share vehicle was located.
From a legislative perspective, if that's the case, if there's some kind of ambiguity in terms of the way the term was used, should we work with our legislators to rectify that situation?
Most definitely, yes.
Okay, I think we need to work on that because to me, it's just, it's almost like, as you illustrated, it's almost like there's no parking anymore as required. My second question is, if a project moves ahead with the READ and later on, it's no longer a affordable housing, what happens to the parking requirements?
So typically, with affordable housing developments, they have to be deed-restricted to be affordable for a certain amount of time. If at any point, the project does not become, or is no longer, an affordable project, then they are no longer subject to the requirements of AB 1851. Meaning, we can ask that they provide parking on the site or provide alternative parking. So it has to be affordable in order to get the parking reduction, so to say. And if it's no longer affordable, it's no longer considered a affordable housing project under this bill. So at that point, we can require that it come into compliance.
Okay, so we can require them at a later date, okay. And the next question is, what if, let's say, a READ project also was approved? It went ahead, they constructed, and then the religious institution ceased to exist? So there's no longer a church or religious institution. So what happened to the parking requirement?
As long as it remains affordable, unfortunately, it would be considered legal nonconforming. Meaning, if the church goes away and the affordable project and housing is still there, it can continue to remain.
So the first scenario is really bad because we can require them for parking, but it's going to be, from practical perspective, it's going to be very difficult to require them to provide parking at the later day when construction has been completed already. Right?
Yes, yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that's all my questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mr. Santianez. Victor Sanchez, questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Hamada, questions of staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, Elizabeth, just a couple of thoughts that came to mind initially after reading this. Does the legislation take into consideration the base zone of the property? Or it's, and the associated density? Otherwise, you know, we could be looking at, again, R1 property with multifamily, again. That's one observation, and it doesn't provide, or it doesn't require us, or can we then pursue any necessary zone changes, general plan amendments? Again, this is something that's sort of disconcerting with this legislation and is the confusion that comes forth. Someone needs to be muted. There's a phone that's not muted. That's one, Beth. Again, and when it comes to the transit corridor and major transit stop provisions, do you believe that those exist per the definition of the state codes? Those exist in Bellflower?
Yes, Councilmember Hamada. So your first question on underlying zoning, I do believe you can still take into consideration the base zoning. So in terms of setbacks on those kind of requirements, those are still applicable. I will say that if the developer applies for a project under the density bonus laws, it does allow certain concessions. So you could have, you know, reduced setbacks, a higher height limit if they are also requesting a density bonus, and that's all per state law. Regarding your second question, I do believe that there is a good amount of locations in the city that are under the definition of a high-transit corridor or major transit corridor. This is interesting because this bill is very similar to other legislations that we have seen along the way. For example, the ADU requirements, it also provides reduction in parking based on the location to a public transit stop. That has been recently revised. And so, for ADUs, if you're located near public transit, within walking distance, then you can get the reduction in the parking. This is very similar. I think the main difference is that this doesn't say "public transit", it says, I think it's "high-quality transit corridor" and "major transit stop". So I do believe there are some areas within the city, a good amount of areas, that fall under that definition. To add, I will say that the future West End Anna Branch Line, that would definitely be a qualifier for this. So that would be definitely considered a high-quality transit corridor.
So Beth, did you say that that the base zone density standard could apply?
That's my understanding of it because, for example, our parking standards still apply, except with the provisions that are given in here. So we could require parking, but we can't require less than one parking space, so it does provide that reduction. And then there's another layer that says, if you're within a certain distance, then you get more of a reduction. So I-
People can hear me.
I do believe that the base zoning and development standards apply.
All right, so we do have churches in the R1 zone?
Yes.
So how do we envision that working?
Well, some of them could have rather large lots, and some of them can have really small lots. I think the small lots are going to be the problematic ones because there's already little parking on the smaller lots that have religious institutions on them. So, I mean, I can foresee there being a situation where, unfortunately, an affordable project comes in and little, or almost all the entire parking spaces are either being used to develop the housing, meaning the footprint of the housing is going to be taking up a majority of the parking, or that there's still a demand for parking for the residential that it takes away parking for the religious institution. There are some practical issues that come about in implementing this.
Yes, quite a few. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Beth. At least for now, that'll be my question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamada. So before we open the public hearing, we've got a little housekeeping to do because we did have someone that wanted to give public testimony at the public presentation, public comments. And so I'm going to allow that to go forward. I wanted you to have your questions and the staff report go together before we heard Priscilla Wilson give her viewpoints this evening. So, Priscilla, you have the floor. And I apologize that we didn't put you on earlier.
Brown, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, I just have a problem with my phone.
No, I'm sorry, we didn't recognize you earlier, so you have the floor right now.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening. I'm sure you know what I'm here to speak about, and that is the Green Wolf Cannabis business over on Artesia Place. As you all know, that's been a problem, a real problem, for about three weeks now. And I'm not the one that reported it, but I know it was reported to you guys, and you are working on that. And my understanding is they're installing more filters over there to take care of the problem. What I'm upset about is, I understand they're taking care of the problem, but there needs to be some repercussions. You guys keep, and I'm not going to say this is getting ridiculous because, like I said every time, it's beyond ridiculous now. So you've dealt with these guys way too long, and it's just a problem. And you keep just slapping their hands, and it's like a little kid. You slap their hands, slap their hands. They become a teenager, and they just go, whatever, I'm going to get my hands slapped, I'm going to do whatever I want. They've had 12 years of experience. They knew they were overgrowing. And I want to know what's going to be done this time. They, I mean, in my opinion, their permit should have been taken away because they knew they were doing it. That's not going to happen. I know it's not going to happen. That's why I tried to prevent this in the beginning because once they got in here, you guys are not going to take their permits, and I know that. So there needs to be some kind of fine. I've talked about, Jeff, about this. I know, you know, that may be possible. But something needs to happen. So this affected, and I sent you all, I hope you got it, my email of the several comments on Facebook, not only in that general area on Beach Street, down Hacienda, which is near the elementary school. This became a problem for that whole area. Businesses, I'm understanding, at least two or three businesses on that street have problems with that. They were supposed to make this area better, not worse. And all they've done is make it worse, and all you guys do is keep slapping their hands. So something needs to be done about them. Otherwise, keep slapping their hands, they're just going, whatever. You guys have said it's all about the money. It's all about the money. And, you know, so now you're going to have to prove to them that you're going to do something about it. So, because otherwise, it's just going to be like, well, we're paying them their money, and we don't have to do anything else about it. So, anyway, that's all the comments I wanted to make, and I hope you take this seriously this time because it's an issue that affected the whole entire area over there. And you say you work for the citizens of Bellflower? You need to work for the citizens of Bellflower.
Thank you, Priscilla, for your testimony.
Thank you. And Matt wanted to speak also.
Okay, we can start the clock again for three minutes for him, if you'd like.
Okay, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for hearing me out. The problem I have is the lack of commitment by this City Council. They have capitulated to everything the pot industry has asked for. They have given up on everything that they had stipulated that was not going to happen, i.e. their hours, i.e. opening on Sunday. You know, the City Council has done nothing but capitulated because it's all about the money, as it was so clearly told to us by, at that time, Mayor, Mr. Santianez, and it was all about the money. Mr. Santianez fought vigorously to put that pot shop right in the location of it's at now because he didn't want it in his own backyard, and he didn't want the stench going to his constituents. But yet, it's more than willing to go to the constituents in that area, and the business owners in that area have to sit there and enjoy the aromatic aroma of that poison that's being emanated into the air. Now, I would imagine if there was a auto body shop that was spewing toxic fumes into the air, I imagine the city would be on them pretty damn quick and slapping them with fines and/or closing their doors until they got their, oh heavens, their filtration system fixed. But the pot shops, no, they get a pass. Hmm, I mean, they all say it's all about the money. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have a direct question for you. We had spoke a while back, and you said, when you become mayor, the first point of order you are going to do is remove this stupid idiotic three-minute rule. When are you going to do that? When are you going to bring that up for a vote? Or is that just nothing but a bag of hot air coming out of you? The City Council is becoming a joke. Every time this pot industry wants to do something, they know they've got you bent over. And y'all sit there and take it every time. I don't know when you're going to work for the people of the city because you stipulate you do. Tell me when that starts, because it has yet to start. As of this point in time, I think I'm done. I appreciate you all hearing me out. I'm sorry, I'm starting to get a little bit too excited. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to give testimony while we have this part of the meeting open? Madam City Clerk, anybody else have their arm, hand up?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any further raised hands at this time.
Thank you. We're going to resume where we were with the discussion that was provided by staff. And so we need to open the public hearing. Do you have a motion? that was provided by staff. And so we need to open the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I need to put on my And we'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Start again.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Sanyanaz, supported by Councilmember Hamada. Without objection, that'll be the order. At this time, if anyone has their hand up and would like to speak on this item, we're ready to take your testimony.
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you.
May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Start again.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Sunny Sanyanaz, supported by Councilmember Hamada. Without objection, that'll be the order. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
If I may. In reviewing this agenda item tonight, I am just perplexed with what Sacramento continually does. It's got a good intention to provide more affordable housing. But I think the flip side of that is they continue to take away local control. And if you saw the example from Miss Corpus, a development can be completed, especially if a religious institution is already non-compliant with their parking. They can still convert half of their parking space into housing. That's well and good because it will provide affordable housing. I'm for that. But on the flip side also, they continue to require, not to require parking space. And our city is built out already. And can you imagine there's a space here that owned by a religious institution, they will allow for parking. There's nothing much we can do about it. And especially the thing that really irritates me the most is what I asked Miss Corpus earlier about the car share vehicle. I mean, so technically speaking, a project can be completed with zero parking. And at the same time, they will take away parking from churchgoers already in the first place. So this resolution in this ordinance, we're basically accepting what the state is requiring us to do. That's fine because it's state law. We have to comply with state law. So at the same time, we need to codify the state law into our books so that we know, our staff knows what to implement, especially at a later date, later on. So I really want to comply with the state law. But in my heart of hearts, I'm just going to share with you that I'm having difficulty reading section two and section three. This is imposed on us. But at the same time, we are making some findings that these are okay. So I just could not swallow this resolution, these sections of this ordinance, section two and three. Again, I'm for codifying this. We need to comply with the state law. But I just cannot accept these findings because we become complicit with what the state is trying to do. So if I may ask the city attorney, what's going to be the impact if we can eliminate section two and three of the ordinance? As proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sections two and three, as Councilmember points out, are findings that would need to be adopted by the city council pursuant not just to state law, but also to the municipal code. That's why they're in their other standard pieces of legislation that we put into every ordinance to make sure that the ordinance is legally sound. The council member is also correct, however, that this is legislation that is being imposed by the state upon the city. And the city is a general law city rather than a charter city must comply with that law. And regardless of whether this ordinance is adopted or not, the city will nevertheless comply with that particular provision of state law. So in all honesty, the council could take no action tonight, not adopt the ordinance. And it would not be codified within the municipal code. But we would still be required to comply with that state law. The difference would be that those individuals that are not necessarily, are future successors who sit in the seats that we're all collectively sitting in now may not know to look at the state law when it comes to these types of parking requirements and may inadvertently not implement them when it comes to these types of developments. So the idea behind codifying this requirement into the municipal code is when our planners and building officials and what have you go through the municipal code to make sure that a development complies with municipal code requirements. They will come across this and recognize that this is indeed a legal requirement and implement it on any development application. So to answer your question, Councilmember Sanyanaz, you could either amend the draft ordinance. Remember, you have taken no action on this ordinance yet. It's simply in draft format. You could amend it to take out sections two and three. And what would that, that would mean is that this ordinance would simply then be more legally suspect to, or I'm sorry, more open to being challenged by a disgruntled resident or other party. That doesn't mean that the city would not still be subject to that California law. It simply means that this ordinance could be challenged in a court more easily. But beyond that, as a practical matter, again, the city would still be required to comply with the state law. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, but clarification, if we take out section two and three, are these still codified in our, in our books, so to speak?
Yes, if the council simply amended this draft ordinance to take out sections two and three and nevertheless adopted the ordinance, then the municipal code would still be codified.
Okay, thank you. That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanyanaz. You know, as I look at this, I, you know how we always discuss how we were being imposed with 3,000 more housing units? I think that this is their way of trying to accomplish that.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of the things we said we're built out. We've got 50 churches in town with big parking lots. Let's make the parking requirement go away for the churches. And anybody who wants to go to church there can ride a bike or ride a bus because there's no room for your car to park. Because that's all been taken up by the, what I heard Elizabeth say, one parking space per unit. So you know that that's going to be pretty intense in itself. So that parking lot is going to be plumb full. Come people come to church on Sunday or for a funeral or for a wedding or any other use of that place. So it's a far reaching possibility here. It'll change the complexion of all of our cities, especially ours. Mr. Dutton, have any comments?
No comments right now, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Hamada, any comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, to me, this is one of those look at disconcerting pieces of legislation that's being placed upon us. I do echo the sentiment from some of my colleagues that more and more it's being taken away from, you know, again, local control. And I believe it's not going to stop. So we're going to have to prepare ourselves for the next wild bill out there. If I heard correctly, if for some reason we don't want the ordinance placed, at least the full language of the of the state code in our, in our, in our code book. Did I hear that it could suffice as having just one entry saying, see, see requirements under AB 1851 adopted by the state or which took effect January 1, 2021, et cetera, et cetera, and that be it and then we move on. But obviously, again, as what Carl mentioned, the potential challenge. And I mean, I've been through cities that have dealt with related issues and have and one of the major concerns is to lose track of it. And that's, that's the biggie that I've faced where past bodies and staff did not include it and suddenly something pops up. So it's state law. I know that. And but if we want to somehow send another message out there, I mean, if there's a, if there's a way to do it, but it's done here. It's already taken effect. So I'm open to that. But at this point, I'm reluctantly you know, supporting the adoption of the ordinance to get it, to get it on the books. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for Carl. In the, in the attempt to entertain Councilmember Sanyanaz's recommendation, what are the, can you restate the legal ramifications that the city could possibly have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Sanchez. So sections two and three of the draft ordinance are required findings for adopting any changes to the zoning regulations. This parking requirement would change those zoning regulations. And so what would happen is if the council decided to simply amend this draft ordinance to remove those findings, that means that the ordinance would be subject to legal challenge and a plaintiff would fairly easily be able to invalidate this particular ordinance. Now, that may ultimately be something that the city council is interested in. I don't want to comment on that, but from a legal perspective, it would make the ordinance subject to legal challenge. That said, even if this ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, even if this ordinance was never adopted, the city would still be obligated to comply with the change in the government code. And the planning department would, notwithstanding whether this ordinance ever added the proposed language, the municipal code still apply the the regulation into any housing development that met the requirements of state law. The practical effect of adding this ordinance and codifying the proposed language into the municipal code is to help ensure that future applications that are reviewed by persons that are not necessarily here with the city today will be thorough and they will be alerted that these requirements exist. That's a very convoluted way of saying, hey, somebody might win in court if they challenge this particular ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Carl, for that explanation, for bringing it back. Thank you. I got no further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dutton, have you developed any more questions since we began this process?
Yeah, I've just it doesn't sit well with me, but you got to go along, it seems like, just to stay clean. All you need is, you know, to get in another lawsuit or a lawsuit. It's just, the state just keeps hammering local government. And you said it right, is it's another way to make the cities do higher density developing. It doesn't sit well with me, but it makes sense. You have to do it for, you know, and I get what Carl said, if you don't do it now, somebody might miss it later, you know, when we're all gone. It's just one of those things that makes this job tough when you have your heart in trying to build a city and and do the right things, even though some people don't believe so. But you just keep trying. That's all.
Does anybody want to take a stab at a motion? Either, I guess, are three things are, we can adopt what has been presented or we can take out two items or we can table it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may?
Yes.
If we can just revisit what are the options and what are the pros and cons, so at least we know what we're getting into. So the first one is the ACS route is adopt the resolution the way it is drafted. That is option one.
Correct.
Option two, as I proposed, is eliminate section two and three of the, of the ordinance, which will be, which will also codify the state law into our books. And the third option, if I can remember, is do nothing. And basically we're still in compliance. So my question, follow up question to the city attorney is if we adopt my proposal to eliminate section two and three and we get challenged, can our defense be that we're following state law anyway?
We, yes, Councilmember Sanyanaz, certainly that would be a defense. Quite frankly, I don't know that it would ever get to court because well, first of all, somebody would have to have filed the filing fee of $600 to file a challenge to the ordinance, have the motivation to do it. And they would have to ignore the fact that as a general law city and not a charter city, that we would have to comply with the state law in any event. So it'd be a bit of a Pyrrhic victory for the, whomever was challenging the ordinance in court since they would have undergone a long and costly legal battle to challenge an ordinance that really is being adopted as a matter of practicality for city administration more than anything else.
And for all intents and purposes, they have to comply with it anyway, just like we do.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sonny. You know, we all think alike here and none of us want to do it. You know, put it out and approve as it has been presented. But it's like, what are we getting ourselves into pro or con if we amend what we have or table it? I guess I, many times Belfour is the first one to act on these things. Is there a timeframe as to when we have to respond to this? And we know.
Mr. Mayor, the answer to that question is no, there is no timeframe. The fact is that every year, the legislature comes up with new and novel ideas for local agencies. And of course, it's our office's job to make sure that we're in compliance with those laws. And so this is simply a honeydew list for both the city attorney's office and for the planning department.
You guys want to wait and see, see what other cities do? I don't want, we always seem to be the first on all these deals. Or do you want to act on it or do an, we can do a hybrid, we can act on it or we can table it?
And, and Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you won't be the first. My other client already has done so. So
Done what?
Enacted this particular piece of legislation.
All right, good. So that's good to know that we're not the first one.
Correct.
So there are cities that are accepting this as written and approving it. Okay. So you heard that from the city councillor here that it's not unusual for this to be approved. You know, I just don't want to get the city into trouble later when someone comes to the counter at a later date. And we have incomplete administration here because we haven't dealt with it. That's one of my concerns. If they're already standing on our neck to approve this, I mean, it's noble to think we can fight it, but I think we're done before we start unless we get some coalition together. But I think it's already state law based on what I'm reading here. And I never heard that any of this was going forward. And I kept, I always keep wondering, where are contract cities? Where are legal cities? Why aren't there some representation for this to be challenged at some point rather than all of a sudden it's on our desk? And we're, we're concerned. But let me sit here and see if any kind of motion comes forward and that'll determine what direction we're going to go.
Look, Mr. Mayor, look, one more question to Carl.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Carl, you know, a couple of times you mentioned two words, charter city. And I know there's been some discussion about that for, for our community. And obviously, there's some timing. If we were a charter city, what would have been the, what have been the, what are the allowances that we could have considered if we were a charter city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Hamada, yes, that is obviously usually when I speak, it's for intentional purposes. So I have made that point and the council did have a lot of discussion about that in 2019 and in 2020 and approved a preliminary charter and decided that it was more prudent to postpone that for a future election for consideration. If you ask what my advice would be if we were a charter city, I'll tell you this, that the legislation that was enacted, the legislature intended for this legislation to affect both general law cities and charter cities. That said, however, the legislature per the California Supreme Court doesn't get to make that determination. That determination can only be made by the California Supreme Court, i.e., whether or not legislation actually applies to charter cities. So my advice is and continues to be that, were this city a charter city, you would at least have an argument against some of the legislation that is coming down from Sacramento with regard to local land use planning. And that is because local land use is a municipal, municipal affair for purposes of charter city powers. And under a number of rulings from the California Supreme Court, is recognized as being one of those fundamental parts of being a charter city, being able to control local zoning and local land use. Now, there have been hit and misses along the way from other charter cities that have tried to challenge some things. But this is all new legislation and has not yet been challenged. And so certainly, the city at least would have the option of standing up to some of the things that are being imposed by the state legislature. So that is a bit of a hypothetical response to your question, since we're not a charter city, but that would be my once-in-future advice on the subject.
Thank you, Carl. Yes, I, again, from our, you know, subcommittee discussions, there are certain issues that sort of override the, you know, city designation. And that being, obviously, housing, transportation, and some other things, I remember. So even from a timing standpoint, down the road, if we became a charter city, this is in place now. Are we, are we able to set prior, prior state actions aside? Should we become a charter city? Or some of those are mandated during the time when we were a general law city?
Councilmember Hamada, I can only answer for right now.
Okay.
And that's only because, for example, with this piece of legislation, it became effective in January of this year. And to my knowledge, it has not yet been challenged by any local agency, much less a charter city. In general, you know, I always advise, even if we were a charter city, I'd let a bigger charter city challenge the legislation, someplace like San Francisco, Los Angeles, or San Diego, or some other city that had a vested interest in it and quite honestly, had bigger coffers than the city of Bellflower. But we could always do the me too clause, which is, yeah, just like them, we're challenging this piece of legislation and hang on from that perspective. So theoretically, yes, if a charter were adopted by this, by the electors of the city, the city council at that point could go back and take a look at all of its zoning, make a determination of what has been imposed by the state legislature and what hasn't, and could amend the zoning to specifically identify those areas that are of concern for the city of Bellflower and change those zoning regulations at that point. But I can only speak as to the state of law right now. If, say, in five years, a charter were adopted by the city and in, during those five years, there was a legal challenge to any piece of this legislation and the California Supreme Court during those five years said, oh, yes, this piece of legislation is indeed subject to charter cities, well, then those pieces obviously could not be changed by, even if you were to adopt a charter for the city.
All right. Okay, thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Amada. What's your pleasure, guys? We've got three ways to go. If I don't hear anything, I guess we're, your silence speaks, that we're just going to table it and let it go.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go in, I'll just do it and get it done. This is what I'll do.
Okay, whatever you say, Ray.
Whatever I say, I would need votes to do that.
No, you gotta start it somewhere and let's see what you want to do.
After considering, after considering the evidence and against my heart, I wave for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1407.
All right, I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by Mayor Dan Coops. Please poll the council.
Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Abstain.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Motion carries four one, for, in an abstention. All right, that was a tough one, guys, and I think we're going to get tougher as time goes along here, but we're up for the challenge. Ordinance and resolutions, item number 10, we have none. Consideration items, number 11, none. That brings us to the consent calendar, 12A through 12E. Does anyone have any conflicts or any of the evening's closed session items? Hearing none, are there any items on the council members wish to poll for separate discussion or consideration?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fred, Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by, was that Mr. Hamada?
Yes, sir.
All right. Poll the council, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to council reports. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton.
Oh, glad, glad you called on me first, Dan.
Well, you know, we haven't seen you for a week. We figured you had a lot to say.
Did you miss me?
Yeah.
I didn't have a lot to say until now. But anyway, I don't know how you guys all feel or not about our public comments, but when somebody says that I'm bent over over and the pot company is trying to sexually violate me, I'm kind of a little pissed off. So I don't know about my colleagues or not. But anyway, so with that said, I like to, I would like to really tell the Browns that don't call me no more. You can send me all the emails you want, maybe I'll respond. But anyway, for one person that tries very hard and says, no, we're worth nothing, nothing, we don't do nothing, we're all in for ourselves, we're not protecting the city, we're not doing anything, that's just plain bull. But anyway, with that said, they probably don't know that a couple of you councilmen went and visited him. I called him. You know, auto repair that's across the street, I haven't been in contact with him for months over and doing things. So anyway, when they say nothing's been done, that's not true. Meeting with the city manager today and the city attorney was on a conference call, also with the owner of the place, talking about how we're going to find him if he don't get his ducks in a row for people to come out and not knowing what we're doing. And I know damn well that the Browns knew that we were all in on it and doing things. I was out of town watching the social media blow up. Ms. Priscilla don't have nothing else better to do than almost six o'clock, send us an all-in email. It doesn't copy Jeff on it about all the paste and cuts, I guess, you do on the social media and left the names blank of everything. But anyway, for us saying that we're not doing our job and we haven't been on our job, it's a bunch of bull, I'm sticking up for you guys. Now, you, you want to stick up for yourselves, you can do it. But I am not going to tolerate anything like that. And I've already asked the city clerk to get all that in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to quickly follow on Mr. Dutton's comments, thank you, Ray, for those. I did have a chance to go out and visit the site twice. The initial inspection, I did scent. I did have a stuffed up nose and something, I was able to catch something. But I did inspection today and followed, did a couple rounds of the area and did not smell anything. So just wanted to add that. Last week, I was able to do my SCAG duties, virtually, of course. First one on May 5th, the SCAG virtual open house. This was an opportunity for everybody to actually sit down at virtual tables with the staff. So I had the opportunity to sit on the Go, look at the Go Human program, which focuses on, you know, pedestrian and, you know, bicycle opportunities. Then sat on the GIS table and I think I mentioned during budget that there may be some opportunities for some further grant money out there. And then I wrapped it up with sitting at the transportation table. So those get pretty deep and really extensive and, but projects are moving along. At the, at the SCAG Regional Council meeting on the 6th, the regional council adopted their budget of $147 million. So and they also approved the draft racial equity early action plan. So that's been discussed for some time. And the president announced that, that I was appointed to the SCAG scholarship committee. So I have to pick up some little more duties there here in the near future to review scholarship, you know, applicants. So it's a great opportunity to see how the kids are doing. Hopefully, obviously, there'll be some great candidates. And of course, there's always not enough money to go around, so. But we'll do our best there. And then on the 6th, also, we finished with the SCAG General Assembly. And we did have an opportunity to hear from the governor. I think he, again, thanked cities and at this point, I just took it at hoping for the best, so. But, and the, and then the assembly, you know, adopted some further bylaw changes and then adopted the programs that were discussed at the, at the regional council. So that was my virtual week. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Amada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, on the, I think the topic at hand for this evening, the, from the public comments, I'd also like to echo some comments and sentiments. I personally have also driven by the site three times, including today again. I have heard the complaints, like my colleagues have communicated, and I know staff are looking into it and I know that staff are being diligent about the matter, and so just want to echo those sentiments as well. To, and I'll leave it at that. With regards to other duties on the council, I've been attending contract city sessions as well as SCAG sessions, learning more and getting more involved in the role. And then I also just want to mention, had the pleasure of attending the National Day of Prayer with all of the council colleagues here, and that was a beautiful event and a beautiful afternoon. Able to take in some really good words by a lot of our local pastors, so just want to say that it was a great day. And lastly, I want to end with a thank you and acknowledgement for the mayor and my colleagues for acknowledging Mental Health Awareness Month. It is dear to my heart and I just want to appreciate all of you for bringing that forward. With that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my comments. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Victor. Councilmember Sunny Santiness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Bellflower Municipal Association for hosting the National Day of Prayer, headed by Pastor A.D. Gardley. That was a very, very nice event to, to pray together as a community is very refreshing. And the same, right after the National Day of Prayer, I drove by the subject property, the cannabis that's been topping up today's public comments. And I just want to share, I'm sure that, I know that most of our residents know that we do a lot of things for the city and we don't tell, we don't share everything that we do. Because if we do that, we're going to lose time in terms of sharing all this information. But there's so many contacts we do to address their concerns. And just today, I spoke at length with the operator of Joint Forces and, and got an assurance that they're addressing the issue. So let me assure the residents that even though you may not be hearing what we do, I'm sure that we do, we do things to better the city of Bellflower. So I leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Sunny Santiness. So I need, you know, very rarely do I speak out about concerns that, when people bring them to us here as a council member, as mayor, and we always try to keep it civil, we try to be respectful of people. We try to recognize that people don't always think alike in our city. But we've never gone to the point of insulting each other, as was done this evening by a couple, and it's distressing. We've always tried to make sure that whenever there was a question to me or Mr. Dutton or any member of the council in an email, that we respond respectfully and courteously, efficiently, and quickly. The city manager goes out of his way to make sure that conversations are held before council meetings and even during council meetings, as they were tonight, to make sure that anyone who wants to give testimony is given that opportunity. But to be insulted and be called a hot wind for Mr. Santiness to be accused of not carrying on his way right, just uncalled for. And we're doing our best. When I came to work this morning, I opened my store and I came down to the city hall at nine o'clock and Mr. City Manager Jeff Stewart and Jim DeLonga and I traveled over to the dispensary to smell firsthand what was going on on the new day of the new month, new week. And we could smell things that were going on. They'd installed some filters, I promised they were going to do some more. Staff was over there several times today and so was city councilman. And we got a report at four o'clock that there was no new odor and that it had been dealt with. Now, we'll see how this, how effective that is. But I don't want the city of Bellflower constituents to think that we aren't aware of problems when they occur and we take them serious and we work on it diligently. It's true that there are people in the community that didn't appreciate the fact that we approved cannabis in our city and they continue to lambast it for having made that decision. And whenever they see an opportunity because that there's something that didn't quite fit, they take it upon us to beat us up like a three-year-old at Kmart. Don't appreciate it. But we'll continue to do our best we can. I'm proud to serve in this city with the council members that I have with me. We're doing our very best with what we have in our constituency and I'm proud of what we've accomplished and what we will be accomplishing in the future. I'm also going to adjourn this meeting in memory of two local residents, longtime residents. And first is going to be Geraldine Jerry Ruth Olson. Born in San Pedro, California, September 30, 1930, passed away April 20, 2021, at the age of 90 years old. Jerry's family moved to Lakewood when Jerry would attend Excelsior High School and that's where she met her future husband, Kenneth Olson. And they were married in January 21, 1950 and moved to Bellflower. They were married for 71 years and they had a wonderful, long marriage right here in Bellflower, on Chicago Street and Midway. Jerry's interests included drawing, painting, learning about the Bible. She led a Bible study for teenage youth in her home for many, many years. She was a devoted wife, a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother. She survived by her husband of 71 years, Ken, three children, Mark Olson, Tony Olson-Gossit, and Michael Olson, eight grandchildren, 16 great-grandchildren. And our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Olson family for their loss. Also, I want to adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of our good friend, past planning commissioner Wayne Brown. Wayne Brown, longtime Bellflower resident, passed away on May 2, 2021, at the age of 83. He was born to Omar Wesley Brown and Trixie Fay Gilbert on June 13, 1937, in Hobbs, New Mexico. He was named Carol Wayne, a name he never cared for and simply became known as Wayne. Wayne graduated from California Public Schools. He attended Compton Junior College, went to UCLA, received a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. He was a contractor, he was an engineer, he was a project manager, property manager, and he was a Bellflower Planning Commissioner from 2017, 2020. Wayne built many well-known structures during his career at Zapata Construction, including Space Mountain at Disneyland and the Hunt Weston Building in Fullerton. He remodeled many beautiful homes. and the Hunt-Weston Building in Fullerton. He remodeled many beautiful homes in Beverly Hills and Bel Air with his lifelong friend Dale Neal. He was a project manager of investor form before retiring. He actually never retired and went to work on to manage his real estate and commercial property here in Bellflower, where he was dedicated and an active member in Bellflower community, and he was a great member of our Bellflower Quanah Service Organization. Wayne is preceded in death by his mother and father and his daughters Cynthia Ann and Kimberly Lynn. He is survived by his wife Bertha Brown, his sons David Wayne, who is married to Tammy, and Philip Dale, married to Robin, his brother Kenneth Brown, sister Lynette Howe, and granddaughters Kira and Bianca Brown. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Brown family. Wayne Brown was a good man, and when he got on the planning commission, and even prior, he was such a great resource for reasoning what to do with a property, what the future of Bellflower would be, what the past has been. Wonderful resource for all of our city council. He was very, very involved in that. He would make sure, when he was the chairman, he would call ahead to make sure you were on board to give the flag salute and do the prayer. Nothing was left to chance with this man. Great mentor for me. I could call him up any time of the day and ask him questions, and he was so forth, counting on giving good answers. I'm gonna miss him a lot. Good guy. Made Bellflower better. The two-story house in Bellflower was too much for his bad legs and knees, so in the last year, he moved to Huntington Beach, which with regret, but he was able to live there without having to go upstairs, go to bed. But I want to just announce that his passing and, of course, Jerry Ruth Olson, longtime members of our community who are no longer with it. So we will now adjourn to our next meeting, which will be at 5:30 PM, Monday, May 24th, 2021. It is now, what time is it? Five after nine? We're adjourned.